All right. Congratulations. Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic of the British 香港，One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the minutes from that's on for on your table, on your desk, as is the treasures report. I have printed for all of you this document from the State Controller's Office. I think it's a really valuable document, like many documents from the Secretary of Commerce's office. You can understand how, what the budget office works. So, hold on to it for next year's budget again, because as we open up the process more, it's, you want to participate, you really don't know how it works. Let's see what else. Okay, the first resolution. It's a fine commission of deeds in the city of Hudson. I want it for the following term, it's Anthony DeMarco Jr. Do I have an introduction and a second? Rob, second. Next resolution confirming the election of Anthony DeMarco Jr. as chief of the Hudson Department of Fire. As you all know, he's already the chief, as we say, re-elected him. Whereas, the election of the City of Hudson Department of Fire Anthony DeMarco Jr., member of the CHF, this Hudson ladder company number three, was elected as chief of the Hudson Department of Fire for a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2019. Whereas, it is required by section 2113 of the Charter of the City of Hudson that the election of the fire chief is subject to confirmation by the common council. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the common council hereby confirms the election of Anthony DeMarco Jr. of the Hudson Fire Department for a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2019. Do I have an introduction and a second? Okay, this comes back to us. Thanks to Supervisor Michael Chiedes, who looked into this. As you recall, when we first saw this document, we were just sent a five-page document that none of us really wanted to go through. Michael went through it and figured out what is relevant to us, and that's what's attached to the certificate. So, this is a resolution that we are adopting the Columbia County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, which opens up, if there is a hazard, we can then get funds to the media. Michael, are you here?
I am here.
Oh, is there anything else that you had to add about this?
Yeah, I think the summary is that the county has this hazard mitigation plan, the counties are already signed off on it, and there are items in the hazard mitigation plan that are Hudson-specific, that my understanding originated from DPW many years ago. This plan is basically just re-operating a previous plan. So, those items in the hazard mitigation plan, if Hudson signs off and renews the mitigation plan, it can then apply for funds to address those issues that are in the plan, which I think include the Ferry Street Bridge, and the sewer separation, and then maybe there's a third one. So, all sort of good projects that we want to work on. But you also, as my understanding is, you can change those projects as well. So, you could sign off on the plan, and there's a process to change what the hazard mitigation priorities are. So, if by passing this plan, you open yourself up for the opportunity to apply for grant funds that are specifically involved for hazard mitigation. Is that this?
Any questions? Do I have an introduction and a second? Ellen, introduce. Next resolution is a resolution creating a zoning and planning special committee. Whereas zoning code of the City of Hudson was originally enacted in 1968, and whereas the comprehensive plan for the City of Hudson was adopted in 2002, and whereas over the past 15 years, the state has experienced a period of tremendous growth and development, and whereas the common council believes it is critical of the city plan for the planning of the future growth and development of the City of Hudson. And whereas the creation of a special committee dedicated to reviewing the city's comprehensive plan and zoning code, analyzing future development opportunities and obstacles, and recommending a course of action to be taken by the City of Hudson, is an appropriate vehicle to address zoning and planning issues in the City of Hudson. Now, therefore, let it be, sorry, be resolved that the common council hereby establishes a special committee to be known as the Zoning and Planning Task Force, to be made up of the following members. Chairman Loeb, Chairman of the Planning Board, or designated.
Designated.
Chairman of the Zoning Board, or designated. Chairman of the Historic Preservation Committee, designated. Chairman of the Conservation Advisory Committee, or designated. Mayor, common council president, code enforcement officer. To be further resolved, the zoning task force shall operate in existence until December 31st, 2019. To be further resolved, the zoning task force shall meet at a regularly scheduled time to determine by its members' own meetings, shall be governed by the open reading laws of the state of New York. John?
We should just add to the list two members from the council.
Okay, do you want to amend? Is that the amendment that you have to add?
We can add it now. If you want to add two members, you just need an introduction and a second.
Okay. An introduction and a second to amended to add two council members to the group. Tiffany, and a second. Rob, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so you've added the two members. Now, to approve, to, I mean, introduction and a second to the amended resolution. Rob?
Aye.
Okay, next resolution is a resolution authorizing the sale of real property located at 427 Warren Street to the highest bidder, whereas the City of Hudson is the owner of the real property. This is the police station. It will go to the highest bidder by sealed bids in public auction with a minimum required bid of $300,000, and that was determined by the assessment, recently, relatively done, done relatively recently. Introduction or a question?
Introduction.
Okay, Tiffany, and a second. Okay, this next resolution just corrects a mistake that was made. Someone was overlooked in our salary to increase the minimum hourly wage, and one person was overlooked, and this is a resolution to pay that person. Do I have an introduction and a second? Ivy and John. The next resolution is a proposal for an interested dog kennel to provide services to the City of Hudson under section 70 of the City Code and provisions of article 7 of the Agriculture and Markets Law of the state of New York for the period of January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2019. Whereas the Columbia Green Humane Society has submitted a proposal to provide kennel services to the City of Hudson. Therefore, let be resolved that the mayor is authorized and directed to enter into an appropriate agreement with Columbia Green Humane Society for the following fees: $35 per dog per day for the first 10 days of housing, and the 11th day of housing, it will be assumed that the dog will not be redeemed by the owner, and it will become the responsibility of CGHS, and a flat fee through the dog will then be added to cover any and all of services beyond the first 10 days until the point of disposition. This was, resolution was created because we were getting stuck with some extra fees, and dogs from Hudson were taken in by the Columbia Green Humane Society. Any questions?
You said when Columbia Green was taking the dogs in, so they were the ones coming into the city and treating the animals?
I think, no, I think we are, are, no, no. Who are we paying? It sounds like we weren't paying. The letter here makes it seem as if, I don't think we have any fees, or maybe we just want to follow their policy.
Yeah, I think we were paying $35 a dog, but we weren't paying $35 a day, John, so it was every bill we got this year, $35 a dog.
10 days a day.
But it wasn't $330, it was just...
Do I have an introduction and a second?
What happened to the dog then?
Absolutely nothing.
Look at 10, the last eight, 10 of the disposition options.
I think, I think probably, do we, do we have a list of dogs?
Yeah, basically, they, for the first 10 days, those charges accrue. If the owner comes back, they have to pay those charges. After that, it would be an additional over-the-top flat fee that the owner had to pay. If now, it would become the ownership of the Humane Society, and they would have to find a home for these kinds of dogs.
So, when the dog is being reported, and the Humane Society is coming to pick them up, who, is the dog officer trying to reach out to the owner?
Yeah, it would be the dog officer that would bring the dog to the Humane Society. So, this, these would be dogs running at large that are located if the owner's not there.
Because right now, we just see people just posting on social media when there's a dog being found, and I've seen paid from the dog officer or anything like that.
They like, try to see a recording of the dog. So, I mean, right, do we then post on social, or maybe, maybe that's a crazy question.
The truth would only know if they were registered.
Right. I think there's probably two types of dogs. There's those that are registered, that have a collar on them, and the recent one was just a stray dog that was walking through the woods, back into the Humane Society. I think the ones that have ownership ties, you can have a police statement.
I'm going to add once again, if we can have the government, who is the dog officer, come in and speak to the council.
Sure. Which brings us to our next resolution, which is to pay for next year. Would you rather, would you, who's paying to be, who's paying to be, who's paying to be? Do I say that again?
Mr. Second.
Oh, for the dog, John. Wait. Which one are you talking about?
Rich and John.
The Humane Society?
Yeah.
It was Rich and John. Next resolution is authorizing the mayor to pay our dog control officer. Is this the mayor? No, this is the guy who, yeah.
I think your voice is the mayor, is that correct, mayor?
Well, that's, yeah, it's, it's the clerk's office, their clerk. So, yeah, I mean, if we introduce everything, make sure, that is Wes Powell you're talking about. Yeah. Yeah. So, even if we introduce it, she'll be at the next minute to answer all our questions. So, do I have an introduction and a second? Okay, the next resolution authorizes transfer of funds to effectively track HRA expenditures. This is just money transfers within the cemetery, water, and sewer departments to cover health insurance, which had gone up. Do I have an introduction and a second? Rob? The next resolution is more fund transfers, also having to do, well, this one I'll read because it explains it better. Several expenditure accounts anticipated that these should fund some of the city's obligations for balance of 2015, including social security due to recent salary increases, police retirement due to the state's tax differences higher than the written projection, and some personal services accounts based on unanticipated vacation via requests and the correction of inaccurately applied step increases in the CSAK contribution. So, they've taken these funds from various places to cover these expenses without going to the fund. Do I have an introduction and a second? More questions? First. Tiffany? Second. Next resolution is a resolution to accept a Galvin Foundation grant award in behalf of the Hudson Fire Department. So, Hudson Fire Department did ask the BDA for a new truck, a new, not a truck, but a, a chief's vehicle, chief vehicle, which we did not consider necessary for in the budget, and apparently, Galvin Foundation has decided to donate that instead.
And this was for that?
Yeah. The new chief's vehicle. An introduction and a second, any questions? Got a question, or do you want a second? Next resolution authorizes a chargeback by Columbia County for Greenport PMS services. So, I'm trying to figure this. This is our share of Greenport, where's whose law now? Fee.
Does that percentage reflect the cost for ambulance services across the county based on mileage? Is there any true enough on that?
Actually, I don't know. It doesn't seem to be on that position, it seems to be according to this on real profit assessments.
Oh, great, okay. Is there any true enough on that, or is it just a flat, like, contracted fee to the mayor?
Good question, I don't know.
Basically, what it does, it allows those ambulance charges to show about the availability of those in the city, and a lot of municipalities do that.
Oh, okay.
It's really Hudson's bill to show.
Do I have an introduction and a second? Okay. We have, no, we have two local law. So, this is a local law, meaning the absence of the things of confinement of animals and motor vehicles. Was this, this is, you're English? Do you want to sharpen up, or?
There was an incident back in the summertime when a dog was left in a hot car. It was the middle of August, over 90 degrees with snow. The windows were rolled up, the dog was going crazy inside, they had to come out, the police had to come and get the dogs, and then the dog out. And when I realized, when I asked, it was, the minimum fine is $50, or the maximum was $50 to $100 is the fine, and that's based upon the New York State Ag and Markets Law, because we don't have a law on our books for that. And there were approximately 40 phone calls over the past summer for similar incidents. So, what this does, this is basically a copy of the Ag and Markets Law, similar to the Ag and Markets Law, that'll now be on the Hudson City books, whereas the minimum fine is $250, and $500 for the second time. So, what I'd like to do is then just, once this goes through, and for next, this is also actually extreme conditions, so it could be the same if, if there's freezing conditions outside, and then next year, have a little campaign to help raise awareness about people just leaving animals in their car. Last year, there were two dogs that died because of that. That's it.
This is needed, because we did have a lot of phone calls, and I have a dog left myself. My question is, who would be the person who decides the police officers who are getting the phone calls? Maybe this person who is the dog officer should be receiving the phone calls, but how would we determine if, if someone walks, is just, you know, going to the post office or something, and somebody's just, I'm calling the cops right now because I see they left their dog, or, you know, they just walked in a corner store, asked for a post to, a long time in a pharmacy?
Well, it's, right, it's like any other ticket. You get a ticket, you go in front of the judge, and, you know, you state your case, and then the judge would determine whether, you know, what the conditions are. So, it would just be on anything else.
You know the police also have guidelines?
Well, it also says in the law, if that person cannot be properly located, so conceivably to, it's been quick.
Do I have an introduction and a second? Rich and John? Okay, it's over there. Central to this.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh. Chair members, have anything I'd like to bring up?
I just have a question. Is there any other, yeah.
I can get on the RFP?
Probably anything. I haven't heard any more.
No. I'm in the process of writing an RFP for the feasibility study, and I may have to finance the feasibility study, and then I'll take it from there. I know the superintendent would like to sell it right away, but I think she's unaware of, there's some limitations on how that can be sold. And of course, that's to go to a referendum, I mean, I think she would like to sit on the next November's referendum, that might be hard, but we'll see. But it's definitely in the works, our part is in the works. I know the county has sort of seemed to have given up on their interest. Any other questions or comments from the council first? Remember tomorrow night, right here, same, 6 o'clock is the budget, the mayor's budget hearing. Anything within the audience like to comment about this?
Yeah, I'm curious why the sealed, why is there a sealed bid on the police building? Usually it goes to auction. I'm just wondering why that was changed. I mean, normally there's an auction and there's a sealed bid, bid.
Well, it's essentially the same thing. The city's going to take offers to purchase, you'll have the right to reject all bids. You're requiring that there be a minimum bid at the assessed valuation. Once those come in, you're requiring that they be sealed so that, you know, the system isn't gamed. You'll get them in, you'll see who has the highest bid, and you can make a determination. Ultimately, if you decide that it's not acceptable, you can send it out.
And the bids are up in the public? Yeah.
Yeah, that's not usually how it's done. Usually it's done, it usually is done as an auction, so I'm just curious where, where did that come from?
I'm not sure. I mean, usually done where?
Right, the city, the city is always open, and it's auctioned off in the public, under the public eye, and not sealed at all. So, I'm just curious, if that's...
Usually, we do auctions for foreclosure properties. This is a new property that's not foreclosure, it's city-owned, so I don't know if there's a precedence for it, but the auction process is generally done just for foreclosure.
But wouldn't it be more likely that the bids would be higher if it was an auction?
No, I don't think so. I think, you know, we have a, we have the appraisal from 2015 at $300,000. I think that there's, firstly, I think there's going to be a lot of, I know there's a lot of interest following it.
Anyway. I mean, this has been a big argument in the county. The county always does sealed bids, and there's been a lot of pushback because the county, one opinion is the county gets less money because it's sealed bid, and the city normally does auctions, so it's just, just curious. And is that, one more question about that, does that go in the general fund, or is it going to pay off the police building and court building, which was its first intention? It was intended to pay off the debt on the police, and is that, is that going to happen, or is that, where's that money going?
The resolution is going to the general fund, but the general fund can be used to pay down the debt.
Right. That was my question too, was, are those funds earmarked? Like, when, or when a public building, when a city-owned building is sold, I mean, is that considered just like revenue for the city, or does it get, is there a process to decide what that specific money should be used for, and how does that work? Who makes those?
Well, in this case, the resolution is for it to go in the general fund, but any money that comes out of the general fund has to be decided by a resolution as well. So, it's not earmarked. I mean, that, the intention when they built the police building was to sell that and lower the debt on the new building, and that conceivably can still be done, but we're not bound by what they intended.
Mayor? We also have the building adjacent to the police department that hopefully in the next several months, we'll go through the same process and sell that, the city court building, but currently, it's housing our code enforcement office, and it's being, it's become very difficult to find a temporary place for code enforcement. We're looking, we're talking to everybody.
We're looking, we're talking to everybody. Uh, ultimately, it makes more sense for us to rent a small space for code enforcement and get this larger building back on the marketplace, back on the tax rolls, uh, and have it functioning things. So we'll keep you updated on how that goes, but for the past two months, we have been looking at a new place for code enforcement.
Any other questions or comments from the public?
May I speak? Um, so apologies for not getting this everyone in advance, the nature of a long weekend and a collaborative effort. I'm just going to give you a little copy. Um, made it for the, just to be finished before the meeting, I'm just going to read a quick letter, if you don't mind reading some of them. Um, so, "Dear members of the common council, Council President Di Pietro and Mayor Rector, we, the undersigned, are a network of organizations and agencies serving and supporting youth in the Hudson City School District. We seek to improve services and outcomes for all of our city's young people. The Hudson Out of School Time Collaborative, or HOST for short, is a nonpartisan collaborative made up of 28 organization members and is one of 11 official regional networks in the New York State Network for Youth Success. We have been a consistently active group for more than six years. Our members meet monthly and communicate regularly to share information and resources, develop collaborative solutions, engage in professional development, and participate in policy advocacy. It is our mission to work collaboratively to build a culture of learning in our community by creating pathways for youth and their families to engage in meaningful out-of-school experiences. As a group of 28 youth-serving organizations, which includes nearly every local organization serving youth in our city, we represent a strong network of relationships with over 1,000 local youth, families, and educators. We believe that our collective experience and knowledge will serve to greatly benefit the efforts of city officials working to improve the lives of young people in our city, and that we can serve as a channel of communication, an information resource, and a bridge to building grea- greater trust, excuse me. With that in mind, we humbly ask that the common council and mayor work to communicate with representatives of the HOST collaborative regarding decisions made or policies implemented by elected officials or council committees, which will have a significant impact on Hudson youth. In practical terms, it is our desire to participate in a constructive and positive manner in public committee meetings and policy discussions that are relevant to youth-serving organizations. To this end, HOST will support the development of a youth advisory board to work in concert with city officials and the Youth Education, Seniors, and Recreation Committee of the Common Council. Additionally, HOST invites member, invites the Commissioner of Youth to become an active member of the HOST collaborative, and we will commit to having at least two other members of HOST serve as non-voting members on the Youth Education, Seniors, and Recreation Committee of the Common Council. Alongside these organizational steps, we would like to see a commitment from all parties to establishing open lines of communication. Our goal is more transparency, more understanding, more trust, and improved communication between the city and the community. Respectfully yours, HOST collaborative members, I'm just going to read the list. Um, this is who was able to sign on by this evening, there are far more members of the group who would, who haven't had a chance yet to sign on. Indigo Ocean from Hawthorne Valley Farm, the place based by the Center, Emily Shuett, Perfect Ten, Stephanie Monsoo, Bindle Stiff Circus After School, Elena Mosley of Operation Unite, myself, Kaya Weidman of Kites Nest, Madeline Fisher from the Sylvia Center at Catch D Farm, Joan Hunt, Greater Hudson Promise Neighborhood, Karen DePyster, Tabak Free Action of Columbia Green Counties, Deborah Gitterman of Pecan, Michael Cole from Columbia County Mental Health, Issa Coffey from Wise Bodies, Kathleen Clark from Hudson Blue Hawk Nation After School Program, and Peter Frank from Friends of Hudson Youth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I add something to that, President?
Really?
Really. Very good. And I went to my first meeting last month, I would like to join this committee, or I'd be a member on the side, it doesn't matter, but it's extremely important, I agree with you.
Thank you. Uh, I guess we can say that we have received this communication from the others. Um, any other comments from the community? Yes, please, I'd like to ask about yourselves.
Kurt Trumble, um, I just had a question for, um, the new task force that's, is there a working document or anything that you guys are going off of?
No, in fact, I think the intention is to create a working document, that's kind of, you know, is that correct, John?
Yeah, right, you know, run the meetings as a seminar base, first meeting, kind of identify, um, a list of issues at hand and tackle them. This will be open to the public, like other, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn, perhaps? A second? Do I have a vote to either? Okay, members, don't disappear, I need you to sit in the chair.